Before we start, I want to first ask if anybody is making a recording in accordance with the Attorney General's request. I'll announce that I am making an audio recording external from the Zoom recording and external from Lake Cam, both of whom will be making recordings for editing and for distribution on our cable system. I don't know if Kathy is here, but I will suggest that she often makes a recording as Secretary. Pursuant to the Governor's March 12th, 2020 executive order, all public body members may now participate in public remotely in a meet in a public meeting remotely. Meetings do not have to be conducted in a public place that is open and physically accessible with public, provided that the public body makes provision to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body through adequate alternative means of public access, which we're doing by holding this virtual meeting. This meeting will be aired in real time and posted on the Lakeville the Lake Cam website. That's lakecam.tv. The meeting will can be found there once it's uploaded. In addition, the Lake, the this meeting is available on Lake Cam's Facebook account, which is www.facebook.com/lakecam. The Lakeville Zoning Board of Appeals in act acting in accordance with Master and Law Check of 40B is amended will conduct a public continued public hearing on Thursday, May 7th, 2020 at 4:00 PM to hear the petition of Paul E. Turner Corp. Paul Turner, who is requesting a comprehensive permit pursuant to MGL Chapter 40B to construct 16 three-bedroom residences in eight duplex buildings. The project will be 16 unit, a 16-unit condominium located at 44 and 46 Rhode Island Road as provided by the Lakeville bylaws. Pursuant to Governor Baker's emergency order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law issued on May 12th, 2020, provided by the state, the state of emergency isn't provided, the state of emergency is in effect, which it is. This will be a virtual meeting. The agenda found on the town Lakeville website will include instruction on accessing the virtual meeting and documents related to it. So this afternoon with us from the zoning board is Jim Govey, Dave Curtis, John Oliveri, and who I'm missing. Where's Janice is here, and of course, I'm here. So we have a full quorum available, and I want to double check to make sure that Janice, Dave, Jim, and John were present for the first part of this hearing, which was several months ago. Jim, did you hear the first part? Janice, were you there?
Yes.
Yes.
Janice, were you? And were you with us with the first part of the meeting several months ago?
Yes, I believe I was.
David?
Oh, yes.
David was with us, and John, you were with us for the first part of this hearing?
I was.
Good. So all five members present were also present at the first half.
Don, before you go too much further, I would like to make a statement that one of the agents in the office that I'm affiliated with made a proposal to represent Mr. Turner in the sale of the property should this be, should this go through. I would not personally be involved with that, but I did want to make it known that the company that I'm associated with may be representing Mr. Turner in the sale of the properties.
Would that have any personal benefit to you?
No.
Also with us this afternoon. I'm sorry, David. Again, please.
I said the only benefit would be as if I actually wound up having a buyer for one of the units, but it would be representing the buyer would not be representing the seller.
I see. I should also point out that with us this afternoon representing the town is Amy Questle from Town Council and Nick Laney, who is our peer review engineer for this project. And the petitioner is Paul Turner, the developer, Mike O'Shaughnessy, his attorney, and Bob Forbes, who is his engineer. Amy, in your capacity as lawyer, does Dave's revelation raise any concern to you about conflict?
It does. It does. Do you anticipate a decision? Do you anticipate closing this tonight for today?
I would certainly like to close it tonight. I think we've answered all the questions and the issues that come up. But I don't know. I mean, I'd like to. I'm quite sure that the developer would like to.
So it is. It is a comprehensive permit. So you only need a majority of your board to to approve the comprehensive permit.
A simple majority.
So my concern is that even if it's another, even if it's another employee at your firm, bringing in that that sale will benefit the entire firm in some way that you are a part of. And so there could be a financial interest. It could be argued that there is a financial interest. My advice would be for you to contact the State Ethics Commission and get a ruling from them. You know, they have attorney of the day and everything, but obviously, you know, it's a little, you know, we can't do that now. So I mean, I guess you have my opinion. It would be up to you. Mr. Curtis.
Chairman, if I may, Paul hasn't hired anyone at this point in time for whatever it's worth. And with with respect to closing this this hearing today, I think the way we've we've done these in the past is if the board was comfortable that the next step would be a decision and the way the way I did it with Mr. Goldrosen when he was here was we'd work on it till the board's next meeting and try to iron out things in the meantime. And then at a next meeting by the board, there'd be something for you guys to look at and actually sign if you're so inclined. I'm not opposed to doing that again for this project. It kind of makes sense to me that way. If if in drafting this decision, the board has some questions, it still gives us the opportunity to provide some information.
Well, the other thing also.
If that is the way that the board wants to go, then it won't be closed tonight because we can't close it because if they have, if the board has any questions while drafting the decision, if we close it, we can't take information from the applicant. So if that's the way that the board wants to move forward on this, then it wouldn't be closed tonight. And I think that would weigh on Mr. Curtis's decision whether to participate tonight because now, you know, he has time.
Well, the other thing also, Amy, if we have five board members and we really only need a simple majority vote, which would be three.
Correct.
And so one option is for Dave to abstain from voting.
Provided he doesn't participate. He would be abstaining from the hearing.
That means he can't contribute or ask questions?
He could. No, it's a it's a public. It's a public hearing. So he, anybody, because it is a public hearing, anybody has the right to ask questions. And and if you want to go the way that the developer's attorney is suggesting, there will not be deliberation tonight because deliberation won't happen until we have a draft decision. So you know, he would be fine.
I'm going to ask my board, the five member, the four members who are here, I guess it's three. It's Jim, Lon, and Janice. What their opinion is of the option of delaying delaying the deliberation and vote or trying to add with a vote from only four members.
Do I raise my hand? Don, I think favor of accepting the lawyers proposal. It would give us where Kathy's not here and I think it might be good to take Mr. O'Shaughnessy's suggestion. If they're not opposed, I mean, if Paul Turner and not opposed to it.
Hi, Don, I agree with Janice. I mean, I defer to Mike. I mean, he represents the developer, Paul, at this point. You know, if he's comfortable with that suggestion, I'm assuming he is. He made it. Works for him.
Okay. All right. So let's get, let's move through with the data and the information we have. And then I'm going to need some help from you, Amy, on how to gracefully exit the meeting tonight, leaving things for the next time that we meet. And I, at this point, don't know when that will be.
Okay.
All right.
Let me go through a few things that we have here. Just for the record, I have a February 7th memo from the Board of Health. It says the Board of Health reviewed property at the February meeting. At this time, the Board of Health has no proposed septic plan. Board would like to review and approve those plans prior to any construction. As for the project in general, the board finds no issue. So I guess I would ask Bob Forbes if he has presented septic system plans to the Board of Health.
No, no, we have not. And Bob Forbes from Zenith Consulting Engineers, we have not presented anything to them yet because we wouldn't do that until this board, this process is complete with the ZBA. And of course, we understand and agree with that that option. We have to, we have to do that. We have to go to the Board of Health to get all these septic's approved. So that will happen.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a February 12th memo from the Board of Selectmen. It says that their meeting on February 12th, 2020, the Board of Selectmen reviewed the petition for 44 to 46 Rhode Island Road for Paul E. Turner Corporation in regards to the petition. The Selectmen have no comments. I have a rather long memo from Nick from our engineer. Back to that in a minute, if I might. I have a February 18th memo from the Planning Board, which says at their Thursday, February 13th meeting, the Board of above petition from the Board of Appeals, the Board would like to know if any consideration has been given to submitting the application for this project as a 40R. Planning Board would also like the zoning board to inquire from the developer if they have a draft or approved condo documents that can be reviewed. I think that's a question that goes to to Mike.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think we had actually discussed this at the last hearing. No, no condo docs have been prepared at this time where, you know, we're not at that point yet. I'm going to imagine that any condition of approval that the board may write will include that we have to provide the board with draft condo docs for review and approval by the board's counsel.
Okay. Forgive me if I'm going over all this material here. Merge together in the fullness of time. I have a February 20th memo from, it's a copy of a memo from the Fire Chief to the Planning Board that we received as a copy. It says the letter has been written to provide notification of concerns regarding the old field estates project. The Fire Department has no objection to the dimension of the proposed road and or cul-de-sac as all specifications are fire code compliant, although beyond the jurisdiction of the Fire Department, the width of the proposed road does appear to be less than the 24 feet in width as required by the bylaw for minor roads. Again, this item is outside of the scope of our jurisdiction as only mentioned as an observation, a wider road would however improve the department access. At the time of the walk through the property, it was communicated by the Fire Department that a hydrant would be needed at the quote, beginning of the road, unquote. The exact location determined by practicality and convenience, the condition is based on the need to not lay fire hoses across Rhode Island Road. Vehicle traffic would surely make such an effort impossible and would result in the interruption of fire suppression water supply. There does not appear to be a compliant fire hydrant identified on the submitted plans. Did we cover this in the last time?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Thank you.
I could, I'd be happy to go over it again, though.
Were we satisfied the last time?
We, I believe so. We, there was a mistake on the plans that we, we weren't showing an existing hydrant at the Rhode Island Road intersection that is is there and will remain there. And not only that, but in discussions with the Taunton Water Department, they asked us to put a hydrant inside the development as well. So he gets his hydrant that he wanted and an additional one.
Excellent. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a February 19th memo from the Conservation Commission. The Commission has received a request for determination of applicability for this site. The request is for determination of wetlands based on size, but volume and depth in accordance with the Wetlands Protection Act. No work is proposed in this application. If it is determined that the small wetland area is non-jurisdictional, no further action would be required. If the wetland is subject to a regulation, a notice of intent would be required. A hearing on this application is scheduled for March 10th. What happened with regard to this? Anybody know?
I can chime in on that. Our office represented the client at that meeting and it was determined by, we had discussed this at the last meeting and and Mr. Bouchard was actually in attendance at the last meeting. We discussed it a little bit, but what happened is we felt that we, we didn't feel, we know that the, the wetland in question was a vegetated area, but it did not meet the requirements of a jurisdictional wetland. So we brought that information to the Conservation Commission and they agreed with that. So essentially, we don't have wetlands on or near the property, jurisdictional wetlands, but it should be pointed out that we're protecting that area anyway. We're not, we're not going into it. We're not filling it. We're not doing anything with it. So that's what was determined at the meeting.
Nick, are you with us? Where's Nick? There he is.
Here I am. I'm listening.
Okay. I have a February 14th, a two-page memo from you, February 14th, which has 11 bullet points on it. Have we covered this before?
Let me try to find that. I have the April 13th one.
Hang on to that one.
Okay. My file is too thick. What was the date on that again?
This one is February 14th.
Okay. I'm going to see if I can hear with me, please.
Sure.
There it is. Okay.
I think the question was to both you and to Bob Forbes, have we already covered the information that you?
I think the only thing that we still have out there is the sidewalk.
That's correct.
I think everything else was covered.
There were thousand or so issues that I emailed to, I think, to everybody. There were questions that came up from the board members for further discussion. And Nick, I think you responded to your, was it your April 13th email?
Yes, that's correct.
One of them is around traffic, I believe. One was around sidewalks. One was around water.
Water.
And one that keeps coming up is around the the alleged dump that is, I think, on the adjacent lot. It's not part of this, these properties, but it's nearby.
Correct.
So I'm going to leave, I'm going to turn it over to you, Nick. If you can address these issues, I'd appreciate it.
Okay. Well, we talked about the width of the, with the cul-de-sac with respect to emergency vehicles. And I think the point I made was, I think we needed to hear from the Fire Chief and he's kind of indicating he was looking for a 24-foot wide road. One way to look at that is if we had a 20-foot road and a four-foot sidewalk, but that'd give you a 24-foot road in the case of an emergency instead of having a 24-foot wide road and a four-foot sidewalk. And that's, maybe that's something that Bob can talk to the Fire.
What's, what width road was that, please, Nick?
Well, the Fire Chief was looking for a 24-foot wide road. The plan calls for a 20-foot road. I'm suggesting we also should include a sidewalk of four feet. So if we had a 20-foot road, four-foot sidewalk, that satisfies the Fire Chief as being a wide enough access into the site.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interrupt, if it's okay, we actually went over this with the Fire Chief subsequent to anything Nick was involved in, and I do have a response from him on that. And I can go over that when I get a chance, whenever the time is convenient for the board.
Okay, I'll move on. The other was was the groundwater level. Zenith did a bunch of tests witnessed by the Board of Health, and it looks that from those results, estimated sea line water tables down over 10 feet below ground. I wouldn't classify the groundwater as being too high.
Okay. That one, that puts that one aside.
Yeah. In the Lakeville Hospital, I did a little research in the, actually, there was a subdivision plan approved, I think, approval not, subdivision approval not required by the Planning Board. It's subdivided portion of the former Lakeville Hospital into lots to be sold, which included the two lots that are part of the sub, out of this and on that plan, they plot the location of the approximate extent of the land, of the landfill. And it shows that the landfill did not extend on to, I think it's lots five and six is what Mr. Turner is going to purchase for this project. I did do a sidewalk and went out there and you can kind of see where the, what the trash stops. It's kind of obvious where the landfill stops. And it's not on his property. There's an area there where you can see some broken glass and pottery and some rusted cans and pails. It almost looks like it could have been a local dump used by local residents 50 years ago. You were around, but the landfill is not encroached on the 40B project, outside of the 40B project.
And if I'm not mistaken, didn't the developer carve out a piece of land of?
He has to carve, I think it's called Lot C. To kind of create a buffer between the landfill and the development, and that Lot C is not part of this project. It's a separate piece. As I noted on the plan, it's a non-buildable lot.
It would act as a buffer.
Act as a buffer from the landfill, right? Like almost, I think, close to 100 feet from the landfill condo development.
That's correct. It's just over 100 feet, in fact. Bob, do you, or does Paul know of any plans on anybody's part to clean that up, to dig it out, to fill it in with with clean dirt?
To be honest, we, Paul and I and Mr. O'Shaughnessy met with DEP on several occasions about the solid waste issue on the Abiding Apostle. And we were essentially told that they couldn't discuss the the essentials of the landfill being cleaned up with us at that time. We, what they asked us to do is create that 100-foot buffer. They couldn't, they didn't, they couldn't require the Paul to, the developer to create that 100-foot buffer, but Paul volunteered that. So he created that Apostle C that Nick was just talking about, and that creates a 100-foot buffer from the landfill through this property. So I don't know what they're, I don't, I have no idea what the status is of that landfill being cleaned up. I know there were approvals given to prior owners of the, of the landfill property to clean it up and with different options of cleaning it up. But I don't have any idea where that stands.
Hmm. Does cleanup mean cap it or cleanup means collect and put it someplace else?
Nick, there were three options in there. And the, so one was to leave, first of all, the testing that was done at the time basically says that they weren't finding any contamination in the wells around that landfill. So essentially, it's kind of like a benign landfill. It's very similar to the types of solid waste that you saw out there where they, they really wouldn't cause a problem. And so the three options were to leave it alone, cap the landfill, or remove all the material of the landfill, from the landfill and be able to re, in other words, render it completely clean, quote unquote, clean, and then go from there. You'd be able to reuse that land. And I believe that was the option that, I'm not sure, I think it was Stop and Shop who owned the landfill at that time. And I think that's the option that they chose to, they were, they were pursuing at that time. Now, I have, again, I don't know, and we weren't privy to any of the information of what has happened since that time.
Well, there were two, there are two groundwater monitoring wells right at the boundary between Lot C and landfill itself. So I'm assuming that, you know, they've been tested over time and.
That's, that's correct. That's absolutely correct. Now, there, there's a number of monitoring wells out there for the landfill. But then Mr. Maxie had an environmental assessment done of his entire property. And there were more monitoring wells put in in association with that. And those monitoring wells came back clean as well. So we have an LSP stating that as far as hazardous waste, oil and hazardous waste goes, the site is clean. And we have the monitoring from the landfill, the solid waste landfill that says they weren't getting any hits on any contamination out there. So it is what it is. So I don't know exactly where, again, I don't know where exactly where it stands as far as the closure or removal of that landfill stand.
But we do have the 100-foot buffer.
Correct.
Is there any fencing proposed, do you know?
Not, not on our end. We, they, they did not, the DEP specifically didn't want us to put a fence up. That 100-foot buffer was, in case it was needed to, I forget the wording, but Mike may, might be able to help me out. I think it was maintain and monitor the landfill over time. So if we had put up a fence along the property line, they wouldn't be able to utilize that 100-foot property. There's no intention on our part to put a fence up there.
Don, is there, is there an RAO on the site? Has, has the site been RAOed yet?
I don't think this is a listed, this is not, this is Nick. This is not a listed waste site.
Okay.
I recall, go look at the DEP website. So it's kind of a landfill, so it's outside of the MCP.
So then it's just gonna, it's just going to be monitored for, I mean, it's, it's an unlimited time almost.
Right. It has a dirt, if you go, I went out there and looked, it has a dirt cap.
Yeah.
Vegetated, and it looks like on an aerial photograph that the kids use as their bikes.
Yeah.
And but you kind of walk, drive around, and you don't see stuff moving out of the ground.
If it's not with the MCP, we're not going to get many answers.
Yeah.
Amy, the concern, I think, and this is, this is historic and anecdotal. The concern was that this was a dump from, from a hospital that's
Yeah.
been closed for years. And people don't really know what was thrown in there. There could have been biological waste thrown in there. There could have been surgical implements thrown in there that could pose a physical as well as. There could have been surgical implements thrown in there that could pose a physical, as well as a medical risk. And that, that story has always come up, although there's really, to my knowledge, there's been no direct evidence of that. It's always a story.
So, so I don't necessarily agree with the fact that DEP has requested no fencing. That's shocking to me. Because they can still go in and monitor, even if there's fencing. They can simply just open up the fence and go in and monitor. But if the groundwater has come back, if the groundwater samples have come back, why don't we just get copies of the most recent samples that have come back, you know, none detected, or however they've come back? That might, that might help. With regard to, you know, what's, what's actually under the cap, that's where the fencing, I think, would come in.
You're misunderstanding what I said about the fencing. The portion of our property is within about 20, as Nick stated, about 20, 25 feet from the landfill. DEP did not want us to put a fence on the property line there, because that would leave them 20 or 25 feet of buffer. They like to have 100 feet. So if we had put the fence on the property line, they wouldn't have gotten the 100-foot that they wanted.
Oh, I thought you said the fencing had to do with the monitoring. They couldn't go in and monitor?
No, well, they wouldn't be able to ma, if, if, if we put the fence on the property line, the fence would be 20 feet from the landfill. They want 100 feet. So we can't put a fence on the property line there. They wanted to be able to maintain that. Now, we could put a fence on our property, but the requirement of the fencing that DEP imposes is on the landfill owner, not a butters. And it shouldn't be put on the butters.
The other thing is the landfill is still, you can put a fence on your property, Bob, but you can still gain access on Rhode Island Road.
Exactly right.
It's a wide, it's a wide-open site. People go in there, bike on their bikes all the time.
That's exactly right. And that was what DEP said, told us also.
Are we agreed, then, that we think the landfill issue is moot at this point?
Who is, is that directed to us, to me?
Well, I think I'm asking the world in general.
It's moot, it's moot as far as DEP is concerned with what we're doing here. They asked us for that 100-foot buffer volunteer, Paul voluntarily gave that to them. To set aside that parcel for that use, I should say. It wasn't given to anybody. And they're, they're okay with us moving ahead with this. And I don't know, again, I don't know what the status of the landfill or the cleanup of it is. So the landfill may be, may or may not be an issue. But this project in relation to the landfill, as far as DEP is concerned, is not an issue.
Okay, let me, let me back up a little bit. I received by email, a few comments from Derek Maxi, who I think is part of our meeting today. And one of the issues that Derek has raised is, I'm going to quote directly from his email. He says, "As you are aware, 16 residential families in in between two residential homes, not to mention bordering an existing landfill, could be a negative impact on the homes and potentially an attractive nuisance to the new 40B homeowners. Is the applicant amenable to installing a fence with some privacy trees to provide privacy to the neighboring homes and protection to the applicant's future owners?" So it looks like Derek is asking if you guys would be willing to put in some kind of fencing system, whether it's direct fencing, or whether it's trees and evergreens, perhaps, to provide some kind of visual and physical border between residential properties and that the dump area.
I can address that, at least partially, and I don't want to speak for Paul, but there are some existing trees there now that on that parcel C, it's vegetated to some degree. There's no intention of on our part to take any of those trees down. Now, what, anybody cleaning up that landfill does with that vegetation, I'm not sure. But my understanding is, is that, that landfill, I don't believe, I don't know if it's still owned by Mr. Maxi, but at one time it was. So it seems a little odd to me that he would ask us to put a fence around his landfill, or what was formerly his landfill.
Well, I think he'd rather you do it than he does it.
Yeah.
Derek, if you're listening, do you want to chime in?
Yes, Dan, thank you for letting me talk. It is, the landfill, there's no determination of what is going to happen there. Again, there are other three options: leave it alone, add to it, and cap it, or remove. But it's still on the table. But if for some reason I decide, as I still own it, not to do anything there, then there is no need to put fence in there, because it was done prior by the state and prior to any requirement that would require me to put it in. However, you know, when you're going to put 16 homes and two kids up, it's going to be an attractive nuisance, not just that property, but when the industrial property behind it gets developed. It's, so what I'm trying to do is protect not just the landfill and the property, but also his potential homeowners.
Where do we go with this, folks?
Don, I'd like to say something.
Please.
I'm thinking that, I mean, it would be nice if they had a fence, but why can't, why does Mr. Turner have to put the fence up? There's homeowners that own that property could put the fence up on their, their land to protect. And I think that, you know, it really isn't anybody's concern about protecting the development other than the developer. So I don't know about making them put a fence up between the properties.
I'd just like to chime in, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman. Like, like Nick had mentioned, if we did put a fence up, it would essentially serve as a small visual buffer to it only. The landfill is accessible by anybody and any, anyone just going around the fence. So it would not prohibit access to the landfill. The landfill owner would have to put a, put a locked gate around their entire landfill for that, for that to have, to prohibit access to that landfill.
I think, I think to strip back all the window dressing here, the issue is that the landowner has a deficiency in the property, and he'd like you to fix it rather than for him to fix it.
And I thoroughly agree with that. Like I said, the land there, it could stay there in the same fashion it is next 50 years. And it's, you're going to put 16 homes right next to it. As the applicant stated, he saw broken glass and pottery and other things in there. That obviously, I can't go and remove anything without getting DEP approval.
Derek, your connection is really bad.
Is this any better?
Yes.
Okay. No, so the only, we do not know what's going to happen. The property that the applicant bought is zone mixed use. And it's actually was zoned for high-density housing. They chose to go the 40B route or the 40R, whatever they decide. However, like I stated before, the landfill was installed and filled by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's a pre-existing landfill, and there are no regulations, one, to even provide a buffer, two, provide fencing, or do any of this, unless the applicant, myself, or we do have a buyer for the property, may want to do something there. But in the meantime, we're putting 16 single-family homes right next to it, and not to mention that, next to Rush Pond Road and all these other homes. And it just seems like 16 homes on, just under three acres is, it's going to fill it up quite a bit. It's going to be a lot of activity there. And I think they're going to look to that, not just the landfill, but the rest of the property out there that is zone commercial, business, industrial, whatever. And it's going to be an attractive nuisance for that, for that particular thing. The other homes that are on Rhode Island Road are protected because there's a swamp between them and the remaining part of the hospital property. So it would be pointless for them to put a fence up for that. This particular one runs right alongside the right side of the landfill, probably around 200 or 300 feet. So they will have access on probably, not quite, well, a little bit of the front and most of the side.
Derek, what would you recommend? You're an engineer. What would you recommend?
Well, I think where I cannot speak for the person that's going to buy my property, and I do have a purchase sale, as you guys know. And we believe it's going to be some sort of an industrial-type business there. I just think that there should be something there to at least deter these, any of these folks from thinking they, they have a body-saw maker backyard. And putting a fence around their own home, I don't even know if you can do that, because it's condo association. So at least some sort of fencing where their 100-foot buffer is. And they can stay at their 100-foot line. I guess that's between their lot and also their Lot Parcel C. I don't think it's a lot of fencing. It's probably a couple hundred feet at the most. I don't think they need it down the sidelines. However, you know, a future buyer might want something, but I think something should be done.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, we don't see it as a health or safety issue. If you recall, we're providing a pretty robust planning plan already. If the board, you know, wanted a couple of markers to denote the property line, bounds, if you will, we'd be happy to put those in. But I just don't see the benefit of putting a fence in. If this property is accessible all around our site, putting a fence up is not going to change that.
Which it is not. It is not accessible all around, yes.
Paul, what do you think? Paul, you're the property owner. You're the developer.
If Derek wants to fence the entire thing that he owns, and I'll fence, my P set of butts it. Now, the thing would, the dump would be encircled.
Like I said earlier, that is not a requirement for me to do that to the landfill, so I don't have any interest in doing that.
I understand. But to put a 300-foot fence so you can walk around both sides doesn't make any sense either, only for a visual. Not to scare anyone from walking around the fence, or going in from the other side, or coming in from Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so Paul owns Lots 5 and 4 and 5. I also, I still own Lots 3 and 6 on both sides. So when those two properties get developed, chances are, there'll probably be a fence on both of those sides. That I would love to ask Paul to do that now, but I'm not, because I just can't imagine having 16 families staying in that little three-acre space and not wanting to go, not just the landfill, but to go everywhere else. Ideally, if he could fence in his whole property, that would be perfect. But I'm not asking for that. I'm asking to do the back line. And then when I do those other two lots, then I will do a fence, so his property will be fenced in completely. But I cannot go on his property and fence him away from the landfill.
Paul, could you agree to that?
Put the fence across the back.
Derek, did you hear that?
Yeah, and that would be, I would greatly appreciate that. Like I said, I just won't be able to go back and do it later for that.
Okay. Agreed.
Okay, thank you.
Derek, do you have anything else while we have you on the, on the line here?
I think, Don, that was my biggest concern, is, you know, just to make sure that, you know, that many houses stay in that area and don't feel like they have a huge playground in their backyard.
Good, thank you.
So that's, I think I'm satisfied with just that.
Good, thank you. And Paul, thank you.
No problem.
Thank you.
Does anybody else want to continue discussing the landfill issue, or can we move forward here?
I'm good.
Good?
Good.
I'm good.
Okay. A different issue that's been raised sometimes with emotion is the issue of traffic. And I know, Nick, you did a review of the Traffic Engineers Report. I'd love to speak to that, if you would, please.
Yes, I, the general conclusion was that if you built those projects, there would be very, very minor impacts on what they call level of service. How, basically, how long someone has to wait before they can make a left-hand turn into the project, or try to make a right or left-hand turn coming out. I think for most situations, the level of service was A. And I think that one condition was B, which is like, you have a 10-second wait before you can make a turn, which is acceptable, which is acceptable level of service. The only, I think that the engineer, Vanessa Associates, pointed out several suggested improvements to the plan. I think there was, they wanted a stop, not a stop sign, but a stop, decal painted on the where the road intersects Rhode Island Road. There were a few other things. Locating the school bus stop in accordance with the, I actually consulted with the school department on the location of the bus stop. I think the only issue they had was site distance from someone trying to make a left-hand turn out of the project onto Rhode Island Road from a driver approaching from the east. And they made some suggestions about cutting vegetation and regrading at that east end of the site. So I think I might, I had made in my review or memo a recommendation that the, when this is done by the developer, that the traffic engineer come out and confirm that attic site distance had been achieved by regrading and vegetation removal. But I would say overall, the traffic report was a positive report, and that this developer would have negligible or little impact on.
It imposes no safety risks or safety issues?
Just, it was just really the, the site distance. So we call stopping site distance. Someone who's proceeding east to west on, on Rhode Island Road, they wouldn't be able to see someone coming up of the project and making a left-hand turn and have sufficient distance to stop there. But the engineer felt that could be remedied with tree clearing and grading east of the project.
I know the, the issue was raised at our first hearing, the live hearing we had by a neighbor who was concerned about either speeding or accidents occurring, something, something like that.
If I recall the report, I think there were very, no accidents at all. But there was an observation that traffic was traveling maybe three to five miles. In fact, I'll tell you I'll cite from the report. The mean speed of traffic going eastbound on Rhode Island Road was 39 miles an hour, and heading westbound was 37, and the posted speed is 35. So people, yes, do have a tendency to drive above the speed limit on Rhode Island Road.
If I could interrupt, just to correct that a little bit, they did do a, an analysis of the vehicle accidents there. And they looked at the five-year period, and there were four accidents in that area. But that is what they claim is below the mass DOT average crash rate for this class roadway. And it's, I don't know if you consider any number of crashes acceptable, but it's, it's not considered a problem if you're out in that range.
Okay. I think at this point, I think we can put the traffic issue to rest, although I'm sure someone else will bring it up again. But it sounds as if the, if I, if I can summarize, it sounds as if the anticipated impact on the traffic from these 16 residences is essentially none.
That'd be a fair assumption, statement, rather. And as far as the improvements about the clearing and grading, we're okay with that. We. about the clearing and grading, we're, we're okay with that. We, that's not an issue for us.
Nick, are there any other things that you think we should bring up this afternoon?
Well, I know, I was, it's the sidewalk.
Oh, the sidewalk.
The sidewalk. I'm not sure if the developers agree to that or not, so.
You were talking about road width and the four-foot sidewalk, but where did we leave the sidewalk?
I think it's, the decision hasn't been made.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, at, at the last meeting, we stated that we don't have any problem providing that sidewalk, if that's something the board wishes us to do. So if the board directs us to provide that sidewalk, we will provide it on one side of the roadway.
Well, I think I would ask my four board members to chime in their point of view on a sidewalk.
Well, I'm thinking it would be nice for the people that move in, but who maintains that sidewalk? Is it the town? And, you know, it doesn't really go anywhere. It goes to the street. It's not like it's extended down Rhode Island Road for any length of time. And, and we have, the planning board actually has allowed subdivisions to go in with, with waiving the sidewalk on a smaller street. But of course, it wasn't for 40B. So I, I don't know. I, I don't know how the other board members feel. I, I would be either way.
Don, my, my comments on the sidewalk are, first of all, this, this, it sounds like it's going to be a condo association, so it's not going to be the town's responsibility. It's going to be a private road anyways. It'll be up to the, the unit owners to maintain that. And it's, sounds like it's a relatively short road. It's going to be a dead end, so there's not going to be an extensive amount of traffic. I guess my question is, I think this got brought up because the fire chief was looking for a, a wider road. Is that more of a wish list request, or was it a mandate? Because if it wasn't a mandate, then leave it up to the, to the developer to do what he wants. It's going to have more to do with the aesthetics of the, the road for the folks who are going to be buying the units, which really impacts sale price and things of that nature. So I would leave it up to the developer.
Dave, do you have a point of view?
No.
Don, I, one thing that I'm thinking, I was, you know, one thing that the fire chief said is that he would like to have a wider road and with the, with the sidewalk, they can throw it a little wider. It would be good for that. But then the other thing is, what I was thinking about was, and they had already mentioned about the school bus stop, and that would be a place for the kids to stand instead of standing out in the street while they're waiting for the school bus.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may. So there's, there's a couple outstanding issues from the last time we, we met that we haven't gone over, and this kind of dovetails with it. One of the issues had to deal with the roadway width and, and sufficiency of the road to, to handle the, the town of Lakeville's fire apparatus. So what Bob, Bob had done, he had prepared a truck turning plan. He had sent it to the fire chief. It, it shows the roadway being 20-foot wide and 30 feet around the cul-de-sac. And I, I think on file, there's something, it's actually addressed to the planning board, that I, I believe says the fire chief was okay with the roadway layout.
Yes, he did say that. We have that memo.
Yeah. Right. And, and so the other, the other thing we have going on here is we have, we have Cape Cod berm, so it, it kind of provides a little overhang on each side of the road for the fire truck. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. As far as the sidewalk goes, again, one of the issues that came up before was the extent of the, the, the work that was being done on Route 79, because the board was concerned about us coordinating with, with their improvement. So if, if, by chance, a sidewalk were to be brought down to this stretch of Route 79, it would make sense to put in the roadway. The Route 79 improvements stopped at, up by the old dump.
Way upon roads.
Route 18. Right, right. So keeping all that in mind, again, if, if the board was inclined for us to put it in, we'd do it, but we'd prefer not to.
What it essentially would serve as is a means by, by which people would get from their homes to the, to the bus stop, but they would essentially have to walk across the street anyway. Now, keep in mind that the traffic study said we were going to, in the peak hour, we were going to get a maximum of eight vehicles on this roadway, which would be one in, every eight minutes. So it, that's why we, we didn't propose it to begin with. It, it, there's no need for it. But if, like we said, we're not going to fight it. If this board wants it, we'll put it up.
Jim, do you have a point of view?
I don't see where they really need the sidewalk.
Okay.
There's no other sidewalks in the area, and it actually looked kind of foolish.
Janice, I think I cut you off earlier. You were going to make a comment.
No, just that I, I, no, I wasn't going to make a comment. I, I, I feel that it really isn't necessary, but if, if the other board members wanted it, I would, I would go for that. I think there's no reason for it. There's no, it doesn't go anywhere. And there are many streets in Lakeville that the children, the parents either drive them down to the bus stop, or, or they walk. And this is a fairly short street that the kids would have to navigate. So I, I don't know if it's necessary.
Okay. Does anyone else want to speak to the issue of the sidewalk? You know, it sounds at this point as if the consensus is that the sidewalk is probably not necessary in such a small development. Okay. Moving on. Do we have other issues to go over? I'm, I'm going to speak to Bob and to Nick, the engineers, to see if we've missed anything here.
If, if I could, I don't want to speak to Nick, but there were a couple of minor issues. If I could quickly go over a couple of things that mentioned at the last meeting. I have some notes from the last meeting here, Mr. Chairman. And people were concerned about the proximity of the project to, to their well, the butters. And we put a plan together that we submitted to the board about that. And if you'd like, I could, I could present that. And there's also, yeah, there was a, there was a, and I, I could show the plan that I, I prepared for the fire chief, in which he, he stated that he had no problem with access to the property. Now that showed him that, the plan essentially shows the, a fire ladder truck entering and being able to maneuver down the road, around the cul-de-sac, and back out again, without even touching the curbs. Now, we provided Cape Cod berms, as Mr. O'Shaughnessy said, which is essentially a three-inch high by 12-inch wide berm. So it's a triangular shaped thing and cross-section. So, and the reason you provide those is to, number one, maintain a gutter. But number two, it allows a vehicle and plows to, to go up onto those Cape Cod berms as well. So effectively, we have a 22-foot wide road. But again, the plan that I showed to the fire chief, and he agreed with, showed the access on the 20-foot wide road without having to touch those berms. And he said he was okay with it.
Okay.
So if you'd like me to show that, the butter plan, I can, but it's on record with the board, our butter well plan.
Why don't you put it up so we can take a look at it?
Okay. Let me just see on the screen. Okay, I don't know if you guys can see that, but so here is the butter well plan. Does everybody see that plan?
Yes, sir.
Okay, let me zoom in a little bit so you can see. Now, here's our project. What these, can you see the cursor that I'm using on the screen? This is the, the septic system, the leaching field for this building here. And you can see that we got the, we got well, butter well information from the Board of Health. And the requirement is that we be 100 feet away from any existing well. And we're 179, 181 on these. The people that were, seemed to be concerned with it the most were on Rush Pond Road. And you can see these distances here. We've got two, you know, 230, 240, more than 350, and more than 450 feet. This is, this also, I wanted to point out, this parcel in here is not part of the project. And Mr. Maxi mentioned that he still owns this. So there is a buffer between the project and the residence of Rush Pond Road. And for a visual, this dashed line is the outline of where the landfill is on the, on the, on the state hospital site. And this parcel in here that looks chopped off, because it was, is a, is the parcel C that DEP asked us to provide for 100-foot buffer around that landfill. Real quickly, I'll just show you the fire truck turning plan. The, the red lines, the black lines on this plan represent the tires. The red lines are the overhang of the bumpers of the, of the fire truck, the ladder truck, the largest truck that they would have. And it, it clearly shows you can come in, get around, and get out again without having any impact to the, to the berms, or having any problem getting in from Rhode Island Road. So that's the, that's the plan that Chief O'Brien saw when he stated he had no problem with access to the site anymore.
Very good.
And let me just stop that shit. Oh, there was one, there was one other issue as well. I have in my notes, the building height. Some of the butters had a, had an issue with the building height. So if I'm going to just take this over again, if you don't mind, I have prepared a plan for that. This is the architectural drawing of the side, the elevation of the site. And this is the elevation, the building, we're concerned that they're going to be 35 feet high. This is a typical two, two-story residential dwelling. And what the 29 feet represents 18 inches of reveal on the foundation. In other words, 18 inches of what you can see of the concrete foundation. So I know Mr. Turner doesn't like it to be that much. So this was just the worst-case scenario, that 29 feet. So I just wanted to put that on record for the butters that were concerned about the building height, what they were going to be.
So at 29 feet, you're a good six feet under the bylaw limit of 35 feet.
Correct, correct. The building, the requirement, the zoning bylaw states that we could be 35 feet, but this is only going to be a mass of 29 feet.
Good. Thank you. Very helpful.
You're welcome. And that's all I have is notes. Nick may have something else, though.
Nick, you're muted.
Was that a no? He keeps muting himself.
Nick, you're, unmute your microphone, Nick.
Okay. Am I unmuted now?
You are. Muted.
No, I, no comments, no more comments. Agreement with Bob is presented just now.
Good. One of the, one of the things I'd like to do, and Amy, I'm looking to you for some guidance on this. I'd like to go over the list of requested waivers in their plan, and make sure that the, the members today, who are with us today, can, we can vote on these waivers today. Is that acceptable?
I, I actually have a question on the waivers. I, I noticed that, I guess my question is, do they, do they not need any relief from the local Board of Health rules and regulations for their septic systems and wells?
No.
There's no, no relief sought for that? There's no waivers?
No, there is not.
And then, I, I did, I didn't see in the application, because you are, you're not subdividing, you're actually combining two, two lots. Is that correct?
That is right.
Okay. And then, so, and then I had another, sorry, I had one other question. I wasn't sure where you ended up with, Mr. Chairman, I wasn't sure where you ended up with on the sidewalks. It's a no for the whole, the whole development?
It's, the consensus here today seems like it's not necessary to have a sidewalk.
Okay. So I, I would, I would actually, it would be my preference to have you vote on the waivers at the next meeting after we have a decision drafted. Because some of the way, the way that he put in general waivers, which, which you can't, you can't vote yes, you have to deny a general waiver from everything. So I think that when we work out the decision, we might have less or more waivers, but most likely, usually there's less. So it's, it's beneficial to wait.
Can I ask that you and Mike work together to, I hate to say this in a way that sounds insulting, but that more clearly identifies exactly what it is and what we're...
Yeah. Yeah. So I have, I have a standard decision, and that's, the standard decision has a, it's a list of waivers, and, and it is, it's, it's a little bit different from the way that they're presented. So that's not a problem.
Good. Thank you. Okay, let's see. We haven't, other than Derek, we haven't heard from any other neighbors or butters. And I wanted to make sure we offer an opportunity for any of the other folks who are in this meeting, listening to this meeting, for other people to pose questions or make comments.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Derek Maxi again. Mr. Chairman, just one thing, and I'm, I'm sure Paul's aware of this, but part of my purchase of all of that property was that there'd be no wells installed for whether irrigation use or public use. And I heard the word wells, but I assume he's using town water, so it's probably a moot point. But I just wanted to point that out.
We are, we are, we have a water allocation from the Board of Selectment, and once this project is wrapped up, Paul's going to go visit the folks in Taunton and get it approved on their end instead of the water supplier. But there are no wells on site.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Anybody else participating in this Zoom meeting, or watching the Facebook presentation of this, who'd like to ask a question, make a comment, offer an opinion? This is an opportunity for the public to speak up.
Mr. Chairman, there's a 12-second delay on the Facebook Live, so you may want to take that late, a little later.
Well, I'm, I'm waiting. I haven't, I haven't seen anything sent to me from Kevin yet, so I'm assuming that Kevin has not seen anything.
He reported nothing a few minutes ago.
Well, you know, I'll tell you, this might be a preferable way to hold a zoning board meeting. While we wait a few minutes for the public to, Amy, is there anything else we should be addressing now?
No, except for how we're going to proceed, when your next meeting will be.
So we should, we should prepare our homework assignments for next month or the next time we meet. And I think that includes Mike, your side of the fence as well. There's things that we haven't done that you think we should, we need to make sure that's on the list for agenda at the next meeting.
Okay. I, I think we've covered everything, though, Mr. Chairman, unless...
I hope so. I hope so.
With your permission, I, I'd like to work with, with Amy in getting a draft of the decision going. It may be easier if she sent me over. I can work it out with her to, to figure out how to, how to get it put together.
Okay with you, Amy?
Yes. Yes.
Great, wonderful. Jose, how long should we wait?
No questions on Facebook, no questions.
Well, maybe all the discussion of the dump and the traffic has scared everybody away. Just to, just to close on one item, Dave Curtis, in the interim, will you chase, David, are you with us? He's muted.
He's on his cell phone.
He's on the phone.
There he is. David, we're looking for you.
David.
I'm back.
You're back.
That's the bad thing about sitting in your office.
Well, at least you can sit there in your pajamas.
Ah, no, it's too late in the day for that.
Can you chase down the conflict of interest issue as soon as possible?
I will do that.
And I'm sure Amy can help direct you to the right people.
I will send you the number that you call, and they're, they're very accessible. And I think they, I think they are even during this pandemic.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I think, I think we can wrap this up for this afternoon. The thing I'm least comfortable with now is knowing what our agenda is for next time. And Amy, I think I'm going to ask you for help on that.
So, so what I envision for the next meeting would be that there would be a decision that would be a draft decision, which would be forwarded to, to the members ahead of the meeting, and for your review. And then you would deliberate on that decision at that next meeting. You would vote on the waivers, and then you would deliberate on the findings and the conditions. Inevitably, there will be, usually what I, what I do when I, when I work out decisions in this manner, I'll also send a list of outstanding issues, if we still have outstanding issues.
That'd be fair.
So the next meeting, you would start with addressing the outstanding issues, and then we would work through the findings. We would vote on the waivers, and then we would work through the conditions.
Okay. That work for you, Mike and Paul?
Yeah, it does.
Good. Okay. If there is nothing else to do tonight, I'm going to, actually, I'm going to ask Kathy if we have any other business to conduct.
You do need to find a date.
Yeah. The next Thursday is June 19th. No, June 18th. If we want to do it three, three, the third week in the month. June 18th.
Mr. Chairman, is, if, if, if by chance we're, we're still doing it on Zoom, could we potentially do it the first week of June? Yeah, that's what I'm looking at, June 4th.
Thursday, the 4th? Well, let me poll the members here. Jim, how does the 4th look for you?
The 4th is fine with me. It's the same time as this.
I think that works for people. Janice, how about you?
That, that's fine with me. Does this have to be advertised? And it, do we have time to do that? If it does, I don't know. That would be a Kathy.
No, it's a continued, it's a continued hearing, so.
Perfect, okay. Thank you.
Assuming you get a clean bill of health from the Attorney General's office.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Kathy, how about you?
That's fine.
John?
I'm good.
Okay. So let's tentatively aim for Thursday, June 4th at 4:00 PM. Nick, if we need you?
I'm available.
Nick's available, and I assume Bob is available if we need him.
Absolutely.
Great, okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, the meeting is going to be, the meeting's going to be, the, the motion would be to continue the meeting, to continue the hearing to June 4th, 2020, at 4:00 PM at Town Hall unless otherwise, unless otherwise indicated on the agenda.
Unless otherwise indicated.
And that, that gives you, yeah. That gives you options.
I, I need a motion from somebody to continue to Thursday, June 4th at 4:00 PM at...
So moved.
Wouldn't be Town Hall, it would be at the library at the moment.
The library, okay, at the library.
We don't know if the library's available.
Right, but that's why we're saying unless otherwise noted on the agenda.
Perfect.
And then your agenda will have your Zoom information, just as it did before.
Okay, let's repeat the motion for clarity.
Sure. So the motion, and then after I say this, somebody can just say so moved. Motion to continue the public hearing on Old Field Estates to June 4th, 2020, at 4:00 PM at the Lakeville Public Library unless otherwise noted on the agenda and on the town website.
So moved.
Is there a second to the motion, please?
Second.
Jim has second. Who, who made the motion?
John.
John made the motion.
I did.
Then seconded. Any further discussion on the motion?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor, please.
Aye.
Aye. I think, I think I'd like a roll call vote.
I was just clearing.
John says...
All of it. All of very aye.
John, look. Janice says aye?
Yes.
David says aye?
David says aye.
Jim?
Jim says aye.
Jim says aye, and Don says aye. So all in favor. Thank you for your patience with this format.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for, for, for holding it for us tonight. We appreciate your consideration.
Sorry it took so long.
Thank you very much. Well done.
At least, at least, at least we're all healthy right now.
Right, right. All right, thank you. We will be. Thank you.
So before we, before we close our regular meeting, Kathy, do we have other business to conduct tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. That being the case, Jose, you can cut the wire, and I will adjourn the meeting at, it's like 5:20. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Go along.